Can you hear me, Robin? I can't hear anything. Thanks, Michelle.
Hello, Madam Mayor.
Hello, Gordon. Okay, I do have audio. I was just asking Michelle.
Nobody's talked to you yet.
All right. I just wanted to make sure.
Let me ask you, how are we gonna pronounce my name tonight?
House, like house.
Very good.
I've been doing okay now. It just took me about a month and then I've been fine.
Yeah, I think. How is the volume on this thing?
On your iPad? It should be on the side. It's on the side, opposite of turning it off and on.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. I wasn't even thinking. I was thinking I had to do something on the screen, but.
You find it?
I'm still. Yeah, I got it.
Okay.
Oh, that's much better. That is much better. So how are things? Are you working from home, I assume?
Yes, I am. And this is my time where I'm actually on a lot of Zoom and conference calls anyways, because I'm on a national committee and that's how we all communicate. So it's kind of not different than normal.
Well, we did. We've been doing it for Rotary and then Rudy Flores's group did it this morning, which it went well. That was his first one hosting, so I'm still jacking around this thing. Yeah, so, but we've been doing it for Rotary and that's, you know, that's worked pretty well for us. Ray Leonard's got it pretty well figured out. He's pretty savvy when it comes to technology.
Yeah, I was gonna say, he'd be pretty good at that.
Yippers. So who's on? Anybody besides us?
No, Brad. Brad and Alan. Well, Alan was here, he left. We're looking at his chair.
I guess I should put up the gallery shot then. There it is. There's everybody.
Hello, Gordon.
Hello.
Hi, lad.
Hello.
I'm gonna figure the usage where to give it to you.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening, Don Taylor.
Good morning, Mayor.
Good, how are you?
Hi, Robin Connor.
Why don't you send it to you?
Hi, Mr.
Gordon, it's like you got a crew there.
Mr. Taylor.
How are you, Mrs. Connor?
Good, how are you?
Good. I'll go offline as soon as you guys go formal, you know, if they don't look at me.
That was kind of a snarky laugh, Mayor.
It was.
No, it was not. Don is just, he makes me laugh all the time. He knows it.
It's okay, lad.
Okay.
I hope you're all doing well.
Doing great.
It's our city administrator. Bird pictures every day.
Yesterday, we were out for a long walk and saw our city administrator and his wife finishing a walk and going up their driveway. We didn't have a chance to say hi to them.
Hey, yeah, we were out for a long time yesterday.
Yeah, we, we did three miles.
Yeah, we did something like that. It was nice. Where'd you see us at?
Well, we were across the street from your house and a half a block down, and you were walking along with it. Sharon said, I think that's Nathan and his wife. You turned it up your driveway and you were, so.
Okay, yeah.
Mommy Court, yeah.
So, Don, did you lose your razor or did you have any shaving cream?
Well, so, no, I didn't lose my razor, but I decided to go back to the 70s when I used to have some facial hair and, because I don't have any hair up top now, Gordon. And I'll keep it for a little while longer.
Okay, well, the 70s were good.
Yes, they were. And the 60s and the 50s.
There you go.
For those of you that remember that.
I remember all the 60s and 70s. I had a little bit of a picture.
Lots of people.
70s are blurry for me.
I was just thinking that, lad.
Well, I was sort of in and out, you know?
Yeah, I know. I understand. I didn't see you, Commissioner Halt. How are you tonight?
I complain, Gordon, just, you know.
Well, you can complain, but it won't do you any good.
Yeah, yeah. I got a tie on, Don. You see that?
I knew that's why you put that on, Alan.
Called out in public, you know, I gotta come back, you know, and make sure I put it on and, you know. I do have shorts on, though, if you want to know that. That is true.
Oh, Alan, you do have a tie on. I'm sorry. I didn't notice that.
Right, but shorts. I have shorts on. True story.
Hey, you know what? It's a new time. It's a new paradigm.
Yes.
That's what the newscasters do.
Right.
You don't look happy, Tamara. Cheer up.
Unmute, Tamara.
Un, yes, unmute. There you are.
I'm review. I was reviewing all my notes, Gordon, in case you give me a pop quiz during the meeting.
I do create problems. That's pretty much what I'm known for.
Hi, Sharon.
Hello.
Nathan, are you gonna do that talk then before I even call it to order or after?
About three minutes, I'll do that little intro paragraph and then I'll hand it over to you. Same thing as last time with a couple little tweaks.
Okay, thank you. We need like the Jeopardy song playing. It's like there, there needs to be something there.
Does everybody else see just little icon heads along the top of their screen? Or is there a way to make everybody's faces a little bit bigger?
Waffle icon up at the top right hand of your screen. It's like nine dots. If you click it, you'll get the whole grid with everybody.
Well, there's 29 people now. You're not gonna get them all, but.
Okay, thank you.
We're gonna get a bunch.
Everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Hello, everyone. I'm Nathan Bird, City Administrator. It is 7 o'clock and I'd like to address just a few things before Mayor Heath officially calls us to order. Governor Whitmer has extended the executive order in virtual meetings until May 12th. So our meeting tonight and our meeting on May 4th will be held virtually pending any changes to that order. For much of the meeting, we asked that participants other than Commissioners and staff members remain muted to allow the Commissioners to have their discussions and conduct their business. Opportunities for public comment will be offered at various points throughout the meeting. At those times, participants will be unmuted and the opportunity to address the Commission will be provided. The three-minute rule continues to be for the public comment period at the end of the meeting. And when it's time for public comment, please identify your name and address for the record prior to making your statement. Once we formally begin the meeting, the format and structure will be the exact same as it is in person and we work through our agenda items as usual. All Commission rules and procedures do remain in effect. Anyone needing to see the agenda for tonight can find it online at adriancity.com. And captioning is available if needed. At the bottom of the screen, there should be an icon. You can click for that. Thank you all for participating tonight and Mayor Heath, it's all yours.
I also would like to add to that before I call it to order that I am going to allow for a little bit of downtime just to make sure that any public comment, we do hear everyone. So the meeting will may not move as quickly as some of you would like, but I want to make sure that everybody is heard and sometimes there's a little bit of a lag time with doing Zoom meetings. So just to make everyone aware. All right, okay. I call to order the April 20th, 2020 meeting of the Adrian City Commission. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and a pledge of offense. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Heath.
President.
Commissioner Halt.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Watson.
Present.
Commissioner Strayer.
Present.
Commissioner Gaus.
Present.
Our Commission members present.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the April 6, 2020 regular meeting of the Adrian City Commission?
So moved.
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Halt with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please.
Commissioner.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gaus.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Minutes approved by unanimous vote.
May I have a motion to pay the vouchers as presented?
Move to pay the vouchers as presented.
Right.
I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gaus.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Halt.
Yes.
Vouchers approved by unanimous vote.
We have a revenue and expenditure report for March from Finance. Are there any Commissioner comments? Moving on to the regular agenda, special orders. This is Special Order Dash One, Public Hearing to Hear and Get Consider Comments of the Proposed Fiscal Year 2020-21 Budget and General Appropriations Act. I now open this hearing for public comment.
Ken Tokar, 110 South Locust. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, we can, Ken.
Okay, thank you. During the past two weeks, I have engaged members of council in discussions about the City of Adrian's proposed budget. And today, I would rate Council's overall response at an eight out of 10. In addition to council, I reached out to the Michigan Department of Treasury and discussed the City of Adrian budget with Congressman Tim Walberg and State Representative Brona Colley. The Congressman made it clear that the federal government would not be bailing out the City of Adrian. While Representative Colley discussed the impact of pension deficits on city budgets and a concern that cities similar to Adrian made pension promises that they have no intention of honoring and no funds to cover. Today, you're going to be told that there are other cities in the same predicament as Adrian. And because everyone is jumping off of the cliff, your city administrator is telling you where the line ends. I agree that there are cities that are in the same predicament. They ultimately went into receivership and were assigned emergency managers. Some of those cities are Detroit, Highland Park, Benton Harbor, Romulus, E Corst, Green Oak Township and Flint, Michigan. On the other hand, I am here to tell you that there are a lot of communities in the state of Michigan who are not in this predicament. And I would like to see Adrian join those ranks. To provide a perspective that you can relate to, I would ask you to think about a single government entity comprised of Adrian Township, Raisin Township and Madison Township. Now compare this hypothetical government entity to the City of Adrian. You will find a government entity that services the same population as the City of Adrian. A government entity that oversees an additional 90 square miles. A government entity that provides fire services for an additional 90 square miles at half the cost of the City of Adrian for their eight square miles. A government with a combined budget that is a third the size of the City of Adrian less sheriff patrols. A government with a combined pension deficit of less than $2 million. And finally, a government with property values that are more than double that of the City of Adrian. Think about it. We spent $1 million on a water line to the township that does not generate water. During the past 12 years, we have reconfigured downtown streets on three separate occasions. And at the beginning of this year, we hired a consultant to develop another downtown parking reconfiguration plan. We do not have a purchasing system in place. We have, we do not have a purchasing system in place and somehow justified a no-bid water fountain project as an emergency. Monthly City Council Recreation Reports from 2007 on the city website document that 60% of our recumen, recreation department services were used by nonresidents. Several years later, the department was shut down and this past year, a decision was made to bring it back. We replaced cast iron streetlights with 22 gauge painted metal and an eight-year warranty. Now we are looking at replacing those. We installed cast iron tree grates downtown and removed them because someone didn't realize that trees grow. We have all heard of taxation without representation. Our moniker is more or less taxation with selective representation. To be clear, the coronavirus and COVID-19 are only a part of the problem. And during the next four to six weeks, city administrators throughout the state with large pension deficits are going to attempt to blame their mismanagement of our tax dollars on the pandemic. According to my sources, the state of Michigan is predicting, is projecting a revenue shortfall of at least 30%. So you can only imagine my surprise to learn that administrators would be presenting an unrealistic budget in a rubber stamp from last year. I conservatively asked the city administrator to propose a City of Adrian budget that reflects a 15% reduction now instead of what I actually believe will be a $7 million revenue cut. For the past four weeks, companies throughout the state and around the country are changing. Excuse me one second. For the past four weeks, companies throughout the state and around the country are changing their business models. Taking pay cuts, closing down and putting employees on furlough. Here in Adrian, we want to wait another four to six weeks to see what happens. I have been telling council that there is a hole in our ship for the past three years. Now we are sinking and our captain wants four to six more weeks to figure things out. I bring these things to the attention of council for many reasons. One of the main reasons is the impact that our current pension deficit will have on future generations if City Commission does not act now. In addition to the reduction in revenue, the City of Adrian will additionally have to deal with an increasing pension deficit which will be impacted on two fronts. To be in good standing with the State of Michigan and Public Act 202 of 2017, the City of Adrian pension deficit cannot exceed 60% of revenue. And we all know that revenue is gonna to decrease, which will create a shortfall. On the second front, the portion of the pension fund that was invested in stocks will take a hit. And that shortfall too will need to be replaced to get to the 60% mark. Remember that this is above and beyond any cuts from the state. This would not be such an emergency for the City of Adrian if our elected leaders had kept our pension deficit under $5 million. And now, unfortunately, this council will be charged with rightsizing city government in Adrian. Spoiler alert from the city manager, the failed city manager's handbook to resolve this issue. There will be no changes at City Hall. They will present council with budgets that cut money from the easy things like recreation and roadwork. They will provide additional funding to the Dreamers Economic Development. 18 months down the road, they'll make a recommendation to divert money from public safety. And then another 18 months down the road, administration will present a public safety message, millage, increasing our taxes. I understand that council has to pass this because of the timing. What I am asking council to do is add a friendly verbal amendment to the proposed budget inclusive of the following. City government will report out the following pension information at every meeting. Current balance, change in balance, pension deficit, change in pension deficit, required PA 202 funding, annual funding goal, projected date that the funding will be under $5 million. Number two, the city will make the budget transparent and easier for taxpayers to read. It will be limited to 50 pages and compares into the current 140-plus pages and will include detailed revenue expenses, information for police, fire, water sewage, roads engineering and buildings, administration, community development and recreation. Within the next 12 months, the city will present a ballot proposal to the taxpayers to vote on whether or not we even want an economic development department and the DDA. Within the next 12 months, voters, let voters decide on whether we want our fire department to provide mutual aid to the surrounding communities. Finally, I'm asking that funds relocated on December 18th, 2019 to repave Oakwood Avenue will be put into the general fund. This project should be. This project should be put on hold until other projects that have been in queue have been completed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tokar.
I'm going to allow a couple more minutes in case there's any other public comment. Okay, since there does not seem to be any more public comment, I now close this public hearing. And we're going to move on to resolutions. Resolution R 20-063 is from the City Commission. It is a resolution to appoint Delilah John to the Adrian District Library Board. May I have a motion to adopt this resolution, please?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Are there any public comments? Are there any Commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Hou?
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-064 is from Community Development. It is a resolution to authorize the mayor of the City of Adrian to sign the grant agreement, all amendments, and all grant payment requests on behalf of the City of Adrian for community development block grant projects in support of rental rehab upper-floor housing in 109 and 150 North Main Street. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution, please?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments?
Ken Tokar, 110 South Locust, I'm going to ask council to table this. We've already been told that we need four to six weeks to figure out what the state is going to do in terms of revenue, and it does not make sense to pass something that we do not know will be funded by the state.
Mayor and Commissioners?
Yes, Don.
Understanding what Mr. Tokar just said, I think it's important that you prove this because you're not... Actually, I don't... Maybe Chris can correct me on this, but you're just moving forward with it, wanting to accepting the funds, but you don't want to put a stumbling block here now. If they don't fund it, then they don't fund it, but let's not stop the process. As a downtown building owner, this is really, really important to see more units being built downtown. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Ms. Miller. So this grant is already approved. The State of Michigan has already committed funds to these two building owners. The projects, the plans have been approved, and this is merely correcting an earlier grant or earlier resolution which identified the last mayor as the approved signatory, so it just simply names the mayor as the signatory for the documentation.
Are there any Commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Hou?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-065 is from Parks and Engineering Services. It is a resolution to award a bid for asphalt paving on various city streets, alleys, and trails. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution, please?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any Commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Hou with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Strayer?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Hou? Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-066 is from Parks and Engineering Services. It is a resolution to authorize the acceptance of a cost agreement with the Michigan Department of Transportation for traffic signals located at the Division Street and US 223 intersection, and authorize the Parks and Engineering Services Director and City Administrator to execute the contract. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution, please?
Move to adopt the resolution. Support.
Who did the first on that one?
I'm going to do Strayer on the first and Roberts on the second. Are there any public comments?
Ken Tokar, 110 South Locust, the only reason that this project is necessary is because of the uncontrolled growth in Madison Township. And I guess I just see it as a stamp on Adrian if we approve this, and I offer this because Madison Township overbuilt everything south of 223. They created this problem. Now Adrian's putting in a traffic lane, and I know they're getting some money from the state, but we're also, we have our resources, resources that could be working on the budget and other things. They're out there working on that road project. So I really don't think that City of Adrian dollars should be paid for this. I think that they should tell the state to go after Madison Township. Just think about that land. If all those properties weren't there that are taking our taxes, this wouldn't even be an issue. That's why I'm asking you not to vote up for this. I'm done.
Are there any Commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Strayer with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Hou?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer?
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-067 is from Parks and Engineering Services. It is a resolution to award a bid for asphalt preventative maintenance to city streets. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution, please?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any Commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
That wasn't Commissioner Strayer, Angie.
Oh, I thought Strayer and Roberts both did it. Sorry.
Oh, did you? I thought it was... I have Hou and Roberts.
I think it was Hou.
Yeah. Roberts.
See, I didn't even... Okay, sorry. I was trying to watch the boxes, so... I have a motion from Commissioner Hou with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please. Is that what you're saying to me?
No, it's a first from Commissioner Watson and a second Hou and Roberts did it together at the same time.
Okay.
So who wants it?
Now I understand what you're saying. We'll give it to Hou, okay? So we have a motion from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Hou. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Hou?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Sorry, trying to do this via Zoom while I'm writing down and trying to watch boxes, so sorry about that. Okay, resolution R 20-068 is from Utilities. It is a resolution to award a bid for a replacement portable trash pump for the wastewater treatment plant. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution, please?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any Commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hou?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-069 is from the City Clerk. It is a resolution to approve a commercial marijuana facilities permit application, number MM 20-006, for a dual-purpose permit for Green Sunrise Products LLC DBA Loom Cannabis Company. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution, please?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any Commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Strayer with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Hou?
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-070 is from City Clerk. It is a resolution to approve a commercial marijuana facilities permit application, number MM 20-005, for a dual-purpose permit for 913 LLC DBA Heads Cannabis Company. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution, please?
Move to adopt the resolution. Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any Commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Gauss with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Hou?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-071 is from the City Attorney. It is a resolution to extend the temporary cessation of all activity of the Human Relations Commission other than municipal training events for the purpose of filling the remaining vacancies and additional training and equipping of appointed government officials until the COVID-19 restrictions are lifted and an appropriate reinstatement date may be set for future resolution. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution, please?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any Commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Hou. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Strayer?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Hou?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-072 is from the Fire Department. It is a resolution to approve a fee schedule for persons evaluated, treated, or transported by the City of Adrian Fire Department ambulance service, and to authorize the city administrator to continue the billing service agreement with Acumen Billing Incorporated of Riverview, Michigan. May I have a motion to adopt the... Sorry, may I have a motion to adopt the resolution, please?
Move to adopt.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any Commissioner comments? We have a motion from Commissioner Strayer with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Hou?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer?
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
There are miscellaneous reports in your packet. Any comments, Commissioners, on these reports? We will move on now to public comment time. Just to reiterate, there is a three-minute time limit, and for the record, please state your name and address.
Mayor and Commissioners? Don Taylor, 475 Meadowbrook Drive in Adrian. There seems to be a bit of a misunderstanding about curbside pickup of yard waste. I know that was delayed, obviously. The last thing I saw on the paper said it might... It is delayed, but maybe we're going to pick it up. And also, I know there's questions about when to go up from the compost site. I know that there are many, many people around town who already have their bags out on the street. I don't know, but I haven't seen in the paper any indication of your process. I think it would really be good, I'm sorry if I missed it, really be good if you could get that out to all the public so they understand what's going on, okay? I have 44 bags, and I'm going to ask Nathan to come pick them up. Thank you.
Ken Tokar, 110 South Locust, I have some concerns about Heritage Park, and there's some groups over there. They're out there cutting trails in the park. I believe that they added a fire pit right to the south side of the Stubnet Center. My concern is that Heritage Park is more or less a tinderbox, and I don't know who in their right mind would place a fire pit so close to trees and all that burning wood. I don't know if Fire Chief Massengill is on the phone, but I was hoping maybe he could comment whether he was even told about this, if the fire department knew about it, and whether a fire truck can even get back there. Thank you.
All right, moving on. Are there any commissioner comments?
Madam Mayor, I'd like, I have some prepared comments that I'd like to read.
Go ahead, Commissioner Gauss.
Thank you. I, I'm going to look away from the screen a little bit so I can read these. I apologize for that. I appreciate the effort that the city administrator and staff have put into developing this proposal for commissioners' consideration. While creating a budget is always difficult, this year, for obvious reasons, it is particularly hard because there are so many unknown factors. A large portion of the city's revenue is provided by the state of Michigan to revenue sharing, but we have not been able to get an estimate from the state as to what we should expect. The fact is, they're probably, they probably can't tell us because they're still trying to figure it out themselves. What we do know, however, is much of those dollars come from both gas taxes and sales taxes, and those numbers have to have been negatively impacted by the quarantine made necessary by the COVID-19 pandemic. So here we have a proposal that has been prepared in an environment of great uncertainty. It has been referred to as a whole-study budget, or let's, I call it a, let's wait and see what happens budget. I think we all know what's going to happen. We just don't know how ugly it's going to get. I'm an optimist, and I'm confident that we will get through this, but I don't know when. I'm also fiscally conservative, especially when it comes to the management of taxpayer dollars. With the lack of revenue projections, I feel that we have to assume a worst-case scenario and budget accordingly. To mean that, to me, that means we need to reduce our planned expenditures commensurate with our worst possible revenue expectations. I've been told that I'm being too difficult and that I have unreasonable expectations, and I shouldn't be concerned because we could always amend the budget later if we guess wrong now. Yes, that's true. We can cut expenses later if the need be, and if we have to, won't that be bad news? On the other hand, we can increase expenditures later if our revenues are greater than my worst-case guess. And wouldn't that be wonderful news? My preference is to be able to deliver to the people good news down the road. Thank you.
I would just like to make a comment publicly thanking our sister city, Moriyama, Japan, for the 3,000 masks that are on their way. They are en route to us here in Adrian right now. And just that generosity, especially with the virus starting to spread in Japan. It is not currently in our sister city, but it is close by. And it is their 50th anniversary year, and they've had to change a lot of their plans because of this, but yet they thought of their sister city. And their, their concern was high for their sister city, and they wanted to send these masks. And I just want to publicly thank our sister city and the relationship that Jim Berryman has with them as our state rep and in, for the sister city organization. And just publicly thank our sister city for this great donation. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.